Budget work session for fiscal year 2012. Before I begin, please turn off your wireless communications as they tend to interfere with the taping of the meeting. Ms. Dent, call the roll, please.
Mr. Armwood.
Present.
Ms. Boston.
Here.
Mr. Burrows.
Here.
Ms. U. Banks.
Ms. Higgins.
Here.
Ms. Johnson.
Ms. Waller.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Mrs. Beck.
Here.
Ms. Jacobs.
Present. Colleagues, may I please have a motion to approve our May 16, 2011 budget work session minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. Thank you, Mr. Burrows. It's been properly moved and seconded that we approved the May 16, 2011 budget work session minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Saying non-motion pass. Board of Education has convened this morning for the sole purpose of discussing the fiscal year 2012 budget. This morning Superintendent of Schools, Dr. William Height will provide a brief overview of our fiscal year 2012 budget. And at this time, without further ado, Dr. Height, I yield to you for that presentation.
Thank you. Good morning. Morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. This morning, we will once again review the FY 12 budget that we proposed to the county. At the last budget work session on May 16th, we provided a presentation to the Board of Education, and that presentation has not changed, with the exception of one slide, and that slide is, addresses federal programs. The reason it has not changed is because the revenue picture has not changed yet. We are hoping that at the end of this week, when the council votes on the county's proposed budget, we are hoping for some additional revenue, but without those revenues, much of what we presented on the 16th remains the same. Also want to take this opportunity to address something that was reported incorrectly in the paper on Thursday. It reported that we have already found a solution to transportation and that we had found a solution for reading recovery. Those two reports were in error, because what we stated at that meeting was that both of those recommendations were based on additional revenues from the county. And without those additional revenues, our only means for providing specialty center transportation would be through a hub-based model. And at the moment, reading recovery remains a strategy that has been eliminated from the FY 12 proposed budget. So without additional monies from the county, we would not be able, or have not been able, to address those issues. However, there is one amendment today, and that amendment is the slot on federal grants. And so I'm going to ask Mr. Stansky to walk us through the federal grant slot. We've also provided some responses to board questions that were submitted at the May 16th meeting. So at this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Stansky to give us an overview on the federal grants.
Thank you, Dr. Height. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. To give you a brief update on where we are with our federal grants. As you're well aware, for the last couple of years, United States government has been running on what's called a continuing resolution budget, meaning that they've essentially been running budgets as a status quo for about two years, no increases, no decreases. Finally, a budget was passed in April for fiscal year 11, which is, they're already three-quarters of the way through, but did have some impacts on funding that we will receive for our fiscal year 12 budget. First and foremost, the Even Start program was eliminated, so there will be no more Even Start funding for Prince George's County. There was, I believe, five or $600,000 that we've had previously for Even Start. Those funds are gone. Same with education technology grants, those funds are cut as well. Again, that's another $400,000 or $500,000. Those are obviously to buy instructional technology, equipment and software. Smaller learning communities program has been cut. That does not affect our current grant because of, so each year they issue new grants. We're on a 2000, I believe, a 2006 grant, so that does not affect it. But moving forward, we are planning on reapplying once our grant funds ended, but there will be no, be no program to apply for anymore. The tech prep portion of the Perkins grant has been eliminated. That's about $120,000 impact on Prince George's County. There are also cuts to the school improvement grants. We do not yet know if that will impact us or not. The new grants coming forward are competitive, so it just may be one of those where there's just less money to compete for. We are seeing a 3% reduction in their Title I funding for fiscal year 12, so I believe we'll be down to around $25 million. The Gear Up program has also been scheduled for elimination in the fiscal year 11 budget. Again, does not affect our current grant since we had one of the older grants, but we were, once again, planning to reapply when our grant had expired, and there, again, won't be any funds to reapply for. And then finally, Title II, I have a question mark there. We just got word that our Title II funding will be cut by about $700,000. We've got 5.8, we are budgeting 5.8 million. It looks like it's going to be 5.1 for fiscal year 12, and so that will be a slight reduction in that program. But I think overall, as you know, now the federal government's going into their fiscal year 12 deliberations, it's looking like the, at least the House has targeted upwards of $20 billion in reductions for education, health, human service area. So there's a good potential that we could see further cuts as the negotiations for the fiscal year 12 budget continue. But with that, I will be happy to answer any questions. As Dr. Height alluded to, we have provided responses to the board's questions from last Monday, and so we'll be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Just so we're on the same page, are you saying there's a separate document that has the responses to the questions? I didn't see it on board docs.
Oh, yeah.
I have the, we have the, let's see. Let me go back to make sure I didn't miss.
Was it on board docs, or was it sent to the board? It was sent, it was sent Friday. It's not posted.
The follow-up.
Yeah, I saw the presentation and assumed that we were going to be getting, okay. Why don't I, some people have questions already, so I'm just going to go to Ms. Johnson, and then I'll keep looking.
Mr. Stansky, with the federal grants, if you could explain, or Dr. Height, either one, what are the items that Even Start has, and if and how we would make it up to those youngsters who are involved? In the technology grants, what do we see would be affected? And for the tech prep under the Perkins grant, how is that going to affect us? What will we be able to see is no longer there? With Title I, the 3% cut, what do you anticipate would be the effect of that? Gear Up, while it's not going out in the current grant, are we looking to make that up across the time, the years, next year, year after next? And please explain what kinds of things we do with Title II money, and what the $700,000 in cuts would look like in the system? Thank you.
I'll start with your last question and move forward. Title II, that's our, it's our highly qualified teacher fund, so we use it for recruitment and retention, and also professional development. We have seven mentor teachers that are funded with those dollars, and so it's really to help recruit and retain highly qualified teachers. The $700,000 shouldn't be too big of an impact. We'll just have to, as we do with all our grants, once we get the actual award, we'll, you know, build a budget around what the actual award is. But, so while we have liked the 4.8, we can, I think, still meet the needs of the system with 5.1 million. Title I, the 3% reduction is all coming from the central office portion of Title I, as you are aware. We have reduced the FTEs in central office from 42 to, I believe, I think the number is 16. So that cut is strictly coming out of the central office portion of Title I, so has not affected the allocations that we give out to the schools. The tech prep and educational technology grants, those are all instructional technology-related purchases, so it's now positions per se, but it was funds that were used to purchase instructional technology that will no longer, to be honest, no longer be able to purchase using those funds. Again, we have a lease purchase for technology upgrades that we do every year, so it may be one of those things where Mr. Watts works with Dr. Arbogast to make up the difference using our general funds essentially to supplement the lack of funding on that end.
Ms. Johnson, I will add that you also mentioned Even Start, and the Even Start, I believe, is 500,000, Mr. Stansky, that we spend on Even Start, and it's a part of our early childhood work that we do. And one of the things that we've been looking at, and we kind of thought for some time that that could be eliminated, just in the conversations we were hearing from DOE. One of the things that we're going to do moving forward is really look at how our early childhood is established, and how we're able to bring in individuals collaboratively to train other providers, so that they're using the same approaches that we are, so that all of the training across all of the providers are having, utilizing the same strategies, even without the Even Start funds. But a part of that are some quarterly meetings that, and quarterly training sessions that we have with those groups right now. That's what we were using some of the Even Start monies for. With respect to Gear Up, Gear Up is a grant, as you know, it starts with a cohort and follows that cohort through. I don't know to the extent that because that program is eliminated, is that our grant, Mr. Stansky, or is that the grants prior to our grant year?
Yeah, it's not our grant. It's the grants following us, so.
So although we would like to apply for other Gear Up grants, we will not be able to, but it does not impact a cohort that began, I think, in '07 and moving through middle school. So those programs will still move forward, and those students who began in middle school will still move through the high schools. And I think, Mr. Stansky, answered all of these.
However, Dr. Height, right, I understood that. What I'm asking is, what would happen in terms of bringing in another cohort of students? Would we be able to do that?
We will not be able to, Ms. Johnson. Will not be able to. And one of the things that's interesting, we met with a group on, it was a congressional delegation on Friday, and one of the individuals was from the appropriations group, and their concern is not so much FY 11, but FY 12, with some of these, which could be marked for complete elimination in the federal budget. So part of what we're attempting to do as well is align the resources and our strategy so that it's not such a heavy reliance on those funds. However, they will have an impact, and that's one of the reasons why we're looking at the structures of some of these, like central office Title I, because if those monies are reduced more dramatically, we don't want it to impact the schools.
Lastly, with regard to Gear Up, we've learned an awful lot. Gear Up has been in the county for quite some time now. I would say that I think it's important to look at what do we know how to do, about how we do it, and can we systematize it, thread it through our middle into high school with those strategies that are employed, and look at what costing would be for some of the additional things that they, you know, like the college tours and the evening meetings and things like that. This is too valuable, a program for first time in the family attending of college, and young people understanding that this is in their future if they choose. And I think that is it with the list of items that you gave. The technology piece, it clearly gives me great concern about that, but Even Start, yes, let's look at that, and Gear Up. Please, let's see what we can do about planning it out across the next five years.
Ms. Johnson, a lot of the work around secondary school reform was utilizing the strategies that we've learned, that we learned from in Gear Up. One of the strategies is just creating that college-going culture. Another one is add that, all of those things are components of Gear Up. The other part, to your point, is making sure that students at a much younger age have access to college and college tours and college thinking, college note-taking. A lot of those things are the relationship part of what was in the secondary school reform, because we were, although we added people, some people with the Gear Up grant, most of that grant is really about changing structures and cultures and beliefs about making sure students can achieve at the high school and move into college. And so we've been able to replicate a lot of that in the programming in the secondary school reform.
Ms. Boston.
Good morning. One of the things that I, a question, one of the things I had a question on was the APs in elementary school. Are we actually eliminating some of those positions?
We were not, if the schools have fallen below 350, Ms. Boston, but that was from, that's something that we put in place a year ago. So the, if school sizes are 350, and if a school is 400 right now and it falls below 350, yes, they would lose an assistant principal. However, in the budget document, it was, we were moving assistant principals to 10 months, and now we have restored that. So assistant principals are not moving to 10 months, they're staying at 11.
Right, because I'm concerned, because I heard that there are some schools that are actually losing an AP, and their counselors are actually going to be half-day, so they'll be without a AP and a counselor for the upcoming school year. And I mean, the APs, I mean, the counselors will be maybe twice a week, but that's still like not having a counselor in that school.
Yeah, and the counselor, I think we have eight schools that have fallen into that category, and they will keep a counselor half-time, they will keep a part-time counselor, but you're right, they are losing, and eight schools are losing an assistant principal because of the size of their school.
So what are we putting in place to help the principals to maintain that school? Because even though you may have, say, right on the line of 350 kids, that's still a lot of work for a principal to have to do without a counselor, a full-time counselor, and a AP. I mean, I just don't want to see, I'll, you know, I just don't want to see, we're setting some schools up that completely fail.
Yeah, so we have 21 schools who fall into that category now, Ms. Boston, so they're currently operating without an assistant principal. So these additional eight would be operating without as well, and it is, we have to pick up those duties of the AP, and generally, the principal picks up those duties, because it's a much smaller population. And we would love to be able to make sure they have an assistant principal, but the cost of providing an assistant principal at schools that are under 350 are so much more expensive than an AP at a school that's larger than 350, and that was the basis for the decision.
So we're basing that on a projected enrollment, so we really don't know what that enrollment will be come September, because the numbers may be right at 350 right now, but by the time you get to September, they may have more students, so then they would get their APs back?
Yeah, and we did that this year as well. And what we find is generally the projections, it's only in a few cases do the projections come in higher. Most of the projections come in lower. But we will, we do look at that, and just as we did a year ago, we recalled a significant number of assistant principals because of school sizes.
Okay. So will those assistant principals that we're losing in those eight schools, are they actually going to be in the layoff process? They be part of that layoff, or how is that going to work?
No, we have vacancies at the assistant principal rank, and that's primarily because a lot of the assistant principals, we had quite a few assistant principals who chose the retirement incentive.
Okay.
So we have positions to fill at assistant principal, so those will not be individuals who would be laid off.
Can you give us the cost savings for that, too, especially when it involves the half-a-day or two, three days a week for the eight, for the school counselor, as well as the AP?
Yes, we'll get that for you.
Thanks.
Mr. Armwood.
You said that the Title I school cuts are not going to affect, directly affect the schools. However, how many school, Title I schools are being dropped from the Title I program? I understand because of the reduction or the increase in the percentage farms?
Ms. Armwood, we're going to have to get that information for you, just to make sure we have an accurate amount. I think it's between 10 and 15 that are dropped, but that's based on two things. One is, it could be based on the percentages of students who need to be served at the existing schools stand the same, but the overall cut is through the total Title I budget, and that dispersment then has to go to the areas that have the most concentration. So if schools with more students who are considered farms, if there are more schools or fewer schools, but they have more kids, then they would naturally take more of the revenue. But we'll get you the exact amount of the schools that dropped off the bottom of that list. I think it's between 10 and 15.
The reason I was wondering, because I'm hearing from parents that they're concerned about services, loss of services, and I'm not sure that they are aware, in a lot of cases, that their schools will no longer have access to these Title I funds and the additional services they get.
We'll get you the exact number of schools.
Thank you.
Ms. Beck.
Okay, there was some sort of mix-up, and we just got the responses. So I think it would be helpful if we were walked through the responses, and then take notes as you're walking us through. I have a few questions already on the notes, but I think it just brings us all up to speed here.
Turn to page three is the first question on current staffing at Camp Schmidt, and then what the proposed new staffing would look like. It's a reduction of three positions, two outdoor education specialists and one teacher. There's also been a request on the side-by-side comparison for Annapolis Road, Green Valley, and Edgar Allan Poe alternative schools, what the current staffing looks like as compared to what the new staffing would look like. You see a total of 16 positions being reduced out of alternative education. Page five gives a, there's a question about the facility at Edgar Allan Poe, which will stay in the inventory and will continue to maintain. Then there's also a question about the cost to holding specific grades to the required formula. As you see, the chart below shows a comparison of what the staffing formula is like in FY10 and compared to what it is now FY10, FY11, and FY12. Page six has a table on middle college and the cost for middle college. Page seven, we talk about our strategies for mitigating overtime in the district, and then there was a question about JROC, as it relates to secondary school reform, and that the cluster model and with JROC. Question eight provides a reading recovery breakdown by location, and also that continues on page nine. Question 10 is a discussion about the change to the middle school staffing formula, the 22-to-1 ratio. And I think the important thing to note here is that the change does not impact the number of courses offered. Question 10 is regarding IT high school and how many students will be enrolled in fiscal year 12, and that, and then the final question regarding Queen Anne County, or Queen, I'm sorry, the Queen Anne Building, and imagine moving into that building. And then we also subsequently had some email questions later on in the week. One was on comparison of FTEs from Cesar Chavez Elementary School, it's on page 11. And then we also had a question to provide a comparison of the actual number of students by school and classroom, school year 11 compared to revised formula and class size for school year 12. And so what we've provided, again, is an overall change in the staffing formula and how it's impacted staffing at the schools. And that continues on to pages 13 and 14, and we break down each elementary, K to 8, middle school, and then high school. And then the final page is again, parts B and C to those questions, and that I think the key point, key factor to note is that the formulas apply to each individual grade and that there's no combining. And then there was a question about rounding, too. So if the average went up to 4.7, the school received four teachers rather than five, and the answer is no, we round up, so the calculation would give them five teachers and not four. And there was no change to that process in applying the formula. So that's sort of just a breakdown of the responses to the questions that were submitted by the board. Again, I apologize that you did not get those on Friday, but again, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, colleagues, I actually have a request to have the board take about a 30-minute break so that we can read through the responses, and I don't really have a problem with that, but the time is, let's see, what time is it? 10:38. I'd say why don't we come back promptly at 11:05. Okay? So we're going to adjourn for 30 minutes to review the responses given to us by the administration, and we'll reconvene at 11:05. Let me just state that, Dr. Height, this is not, I think they just didn't get to us on Friday. It looks like it may have occurred through the board office. It looks like it was afforded email, so we apologize with regard to that. But I think 30 minutes should give us enough time. But I think 30 minutes should give us enough time. The Board of Education has reconvened after a short 30-minute break to review some budget responses presented by Superintendent Height. Colleagues, we are now back in session and ready to deliberate on what we have before us. Ms. Beck?
Okay. Back to the PowerPoint slide on slide 18 where we discussed the federal grants. I think it would be helpful to, in this slide, you have some that reflect the amount of reduction, but you have others that don't. So consistency for each line, so elimination of even start per in, X number of dollars, X number of reduction. I'm saying that more so that we can explain it, just like you did. Okay. To the package. On the alternative ed programs. The media specialists for Annapolis Road and Green Valley, those are left at 1.0. Are those not subject to the reduction formula?
They're considered high school, so we left them at 1.0.
Okay. On page five, the staffing, vocal and instrumental music. Several months back, February, I believe, we were told there were not going to be any staffing changes in music, that they were just losing tuning and, and money to buy additional instruments. But now some are saying that instrumental teachers are going to be charged with vocal music instruction and are we sure that there are no formula changes in vocal and instrumental music?
Ms. Hathaway Beck, there are no formula changes that are designed to impact vocal and instrumental music. Doesn't mean that some principals may not be making adjustments at the school site, but there are no formula changes that we did inside of our proposed budget.
So a principal could be getting a vocal music instructor and then instrumental music component or a, a partial FTE and trading that off?
They could not necessarily trade it off, but could say, I want all vocal or I want all instrumental. So it could impact the other side of that.
Okay. So it's not a central office decision, it's a local?
It's a, it's a local decision, however. I'm sorry. It's school-based, but the vocal and instrumental music teachers are assigned through the music department, which is central. Now, the school could say, based on the schedule and the need to provide supervision and, and specialty for all students, we're only gonna offer vocal or we're only gonna offer instrumental. So those could impact that, but there were no formula changes to change vocal or instrumental music.
So we're not asking our instrumental music teachers to teach vocal music?
I don't know the answer to that. Let me find out, because I'd have to go school by school almost to find out.
Right, okay. Maybe if I get more of a generic question written out, that might help. Middle college. This is the same document that we, we had already received. And I'm looking at the school year transportation, the last line in the larger table. For 100 students, $1.1 million for transportation. That just really, that's unacceptable. I, I think that that number has got to be wrong unless we're sending limos out to bring these kids. Because we're telling the public that we're reducing specialty program transportation into a hub to save money, but $1.1 million for 100 students.
This amount is based on the, the way that we run transportation to specialty centers right now, Ms. Hathaway Beck. And because middle college serves the whole county, it would be based on bringing kids from all over the county to this program. If we did a hub base, using a hub-based model, this would be reduced, but we don't have it based on the hubs, we just have it based on their current model.
So we're saying it's what, about $10,000 for transportation per student?
And, and again, I, until we know actually who the students are, this is the, it's the best estimate that, that we can come up with and that, you know, I'm trying to estimate on the, on the, you know, conservative side and make sure we've covered everything potentially. But until we know who those students actually are and where they live, I can get a better estimate.
So would these students be subject to any decisions or vote made regarding specialty program transportation?
Would they be subject?
Including no transportation?
Including no, correct.
And, and especially because that number continues out to be the exact same number for 400 students. That's, I think that's why I asked for the middle college table to be brought back?
And all I can, to respond to it is until I, we actually know who these students are, I, it's, this is my best estimate as to what the costs are gonna be. As the, as the program expands, we're not actually anticipating using more buses because, you know, the, the theory behind it is that we'll be able to pick up more students at each location. But until we actually know who those students are and where they're, where they're located, again, the estimate is still the estimate for right now. And again, this was an estimate based on how we provide transportation right now. If we go to a hub model or if we go to no transportation, obviously the number would change.
Considering this is supposed to be a partnership with the community college, where is their, where are their costs? It seems like we're, we're paying the full amount for these students to go to Prince George's community to enhance their program as well as our program. I mean, I realize they are our students, but in my concept of partnership is there's some sort of cost sharing or some sort of participation with us to start this program. I'm not seeing where they're picking up some costs. I'll need round two.
Yeah, so part of this, Ms. Hathaway Beck, is, so they're obviously providing the facility. And so the facility costs associated with that, they're also providing staff members, although we're, we're doing tuition and fees associated with the pro, fees associated with registering for college, they're providing that as well. So their facilities, which includes office space, which they're housing the principal right now, the facility structure and then the associated fees. The, the tuition fees, as you see, don't really begin escalating until year two and three because those students then are exposed to more time in those classes. But years one, there is a very small tuition amount. But the fees and the, and the cost of the facility and maintaining the facility is what they pick up.
Dr. Height, if I could just ask you along that line, are you saying there's a separate location on the community college campus that's only gonna be our students? In other words, they, they're not using the building for anything else?
Correct.
So they would not have to maintain that but for our students being there?
That's correct.
Okay.
Now, when they go out in years, in the junior and senior years, then students, as they begin taking more college-level classes, they would go to the other buildings as well, but they will begin as ninth and 10th graders in one enclosed facility just for that group of students.
So if we were to look at a budget line item for the community college, would there be a section in it that says middle college for Prince George's County Public School students?
I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure it would be. I haven't, I'd have to ask them for that, but I'm pretty sure it would be.
Okay.
Ms. Waller?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will start my first set of questioning on page 11. It's regarding the staffing and the programs at Cesar Chavez. This school has often been called a Spanish immersion program. And I see that it's being reduced from 23 full-time persons to like 15. And I guess my first question is, what is the future? Talk a little bit about the future of the Spanish immersion programs in the county. As we know, this, it's a lot of interest in Spanish classes. And certainly we want our students, if they can start at a young age, to start Spanish and then they continue with it. And the second, well, okay, let's just talk about that part and the history of that program at Cesar Chavez.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. The, the program is designed to continue as the, as it currently stands with fewer staff members. The, because of the size of the school, the school is, I think its enrollment is around approximately 260, maybe just a little under that. The, but there've been, but there've been advancements at this school that help us run that type of program utilizing a different model. The first advancement is that everyone who teaches at the school is bilingual. And so running a, an immersion or Spanish immersion type program is a little easier there than it was several years ago when half the staff were bilingual and the other half of the staff were not. And so that's one of the things, look, moving forward, we've talked with Mr. Taborda, the principal there, and he is certain that he can continue to run the program with the staff who are remaining because of their expertise in that program.
So is this a full immersion program for the neighboring community or is this an area where outside students can come in and participate in the immersion program?
This is an inboundry program. This is only for that boundary.
And so certainly, so during this budget cycle, it could not be opened up to outside students to attend?
It's not enough space at the school. It's a very small facility as well.
So, okay, looking at the chart, the media specialist, for instance, last year they had one full-time person and now it's gone down to .40. What does this mean insofar as what this person can do? Is that, is that person going to hold another position in the school?
This would be one of the individuals who would be subject to being at or working at Cesar Chavez two days a week, Ms. Waller. And then at the schools that are the smallest of their elementary schools, all will have a .40, which means two days a week.
Okay. And then I see, for instance, the vocal music teacher and the instrumental music teacher. Your vocal music teacher is .5, your instrumental music teacher is .20. And it has come to my attention that there is, will not be a vocal teacher at Nicholas Orm Middle School. The irony in what I see here with a vocal music teacher .5, why, and certainly I support a vocal, the vocal music as well as the instrumental music teacher, but if you're going to have more of a vocal music teacher at Cesar Chavez and then no vocal program at Nicholas Orm, I believe that you're defeating the purpose. But then I believe that we're doing ourselves a disfavor by not having a vocal music teacher at Nicholas Orm. The Hyattsville area is a creative performing arts area. We have, of course, our Hyattsville Middle School that, you know, has the creative performing arts and we have an outstanding creative and performing arts program also at Northwestern. But I don't know, again, as you said, where this is coming from, whether it's a principal, but I think that this is, I don't know where the parents are, but this is something that I think most definitely that somebody needs to look into if we do not have a vocal music teacher at Nicholas Orm. And, and like I say, we have an instrumental teacher .20. How effective is that person going to be at Nicholas, at Cesar Chavez? I mean, what is that, one day a week for, for 200 kids? Is that what I'm hearing? One teacher, once a week for 200 kids?
That's correct.
I think we need to revisit that. I mean, I mean, this is a special population where our children are facing different, first of all, it's the language, you know, everybody's not speaking the same language, they come in at different times. And I, I don't see that and I'm not seeing where it's, because Cesar Chavez is feeding into Nicholas Orm and it doesn't seem to be consistent with that. And I believe that we need to get the message out to the community, what type of school Cesar Chavez is. Is it fully Spanish immersion or is it modified? And what are our plans for replicating other Spanish immersion programs in the county? Now, we're hearing about the Chinese program, which I think is a wonderful opportunity, but we already have an opportunity that's existing that we need to build upon with the Spanish immersion and the population is growing. We have the bilingual family academy and persons want to learn English and Spanish. And so we want them to start at a younger age. Can you address those concerns, please?
I'll be glad to, Ms. Waller. One of the reasons that, first and foremost, back to Nicholas Orm, the principal decides at the middle school how they will do their staffing structure. And I don't, I don't, because I haven't spoken to Mr. Jackson, I don't know why he is choosing not to utilize of, of vocal music, but I'm sure he has his reasons for not doing that. He may have more kids in instrumental. He may be looking at another foreign language, but he has to recommend a schedule that is best for his school. With respect to Cesar Chavez, you're right. I mean, we would love to replicate the program, but one of the reasons that we are addressing, we need to address this model is because right now at this school, and although it's an immersion school, the current model requires an 11.2 to 1 ratio. And we, and our ability to sustain an 11 point, or 11.2 ratio teacher to student is, it's just not sustainable in this climate. And one of the things that we were attempting to do is really look for a way, and we think we found it by finding more bilingual individuals to teach at that school, but look for a way to do that in a more efficient and more cost-efficient way. And that's one reason we haven't replicated the model at Nicholas Orm, I mean, at Cesar Chavez, because it was so staff-intensive. And the fact that we would require 23.2 staff members for 259 students, that's a, that's a very intensive model. And we just could not afford to move that or replicate that to other schools. Now, one of the things we think we can replicate is as we are able to attract more teachers who are bilingual, then having a model that looks very much like the model that Cesar Chavez will use moving forward.
So how many students per teacher is this going to be when we do the 15? Is that the 15 full-timey? How many, how many children to, to each, in each class? And is it possible, okay?
This is 17.
17, okay. So is it possible, since we have this bilingual population of teachers there at Cesar Chavez, is it possible to have some of those teachers perhaps replicate, not replicate, but even go into a school like Chilum that's a small- but even go into a school like Chilum that's a small population, but also has a population that we could share or something, that we could keep more people over in that area? You know, what I should say is, so that more students could take advantage of learning Spanish. And so, are you saying that Cesar Chavez is that to be known as a Spanish immersion school? Is that the title of this school?
No, it's, it's an elementary school. We, I mean, we titled it Cesar Chavez Elementary School. They have a Spanish immersion program.
Okay.
It's a language immersion program.
Okay, language immersion.
Because all of the, all of the teachers now are bilingual. It's a, it's a much more efficient model to use than the one that required for every English-speaking teacher, a Spanish-speaking teacher. And that created some revenue problems for us because we just couldn't have two teachers for every class.
So, are any of these teachers available? Could we do split classes and do something up at Chilum Elementary School?
I doubt that very seriously, Ms. Waller, because they, they would have a full load at Cesar Chavez. However, in their recruitment efforts, then we have to look more for more bilingual, more bilingual teachers. Just not at Cesar Chavez, but in many of the other schools, Chilum being one.
So I hope that will be noted that I am really disappointed and I hope that the administration will look at staffing a vocal teacher at Nicholas Orm. Or, and please let me know why there is not a vocal teacher there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. Dr. Hyde, with regard to Cesar Chavez, I spoke with Dr. Coleman Potter during the break and I want to bring to your attention the concern that I have about the impact of riffing, bumping on the potential for having foreign language, in this case, Spanish language instruction, which has been a, you know, a central piece of the success of that school, that it may be impacted. And so, you may not at this moment know if, in fact, the staffing changes in the school will impact that. I am asking that you look at, as soon as you get that, to see if that instruction can continue. And if it cannot, that you look at a way to work through HR and with the unions through a process that will allow us to be able to maintain appropriate staff in the building so that that program is not eliminated due to factors beyond its control. It is clearly a concern and while I know that changes have to be made, I am very hopeful that such a wonderful program in such a small school that gives us good information about how we could do something like this in a different school with a different language. So I am asking that you look at that. My last is about page 13, um, at K-8 schools. Tag teachers, looking at the adjustments. Tag teachers, by some, are these people, I know they're K-8, so these would be tagged across the grades of K-8, K-3, K-6, I'm not sure. Tag is a programming for particular instruction to meet those unique learnings, needs of children. Why the designation of tag teacher rather than coordinator? Or they're serving a dual role or they're teaching specific children? I'm not exactly certain the description for tag teacher. And I wondered about that because you are taking that number down. Is it something that we could have done without some time before? Or are we looking to have a negative impact on tag instruction in K-8 schools as well as elementary? And I don't think they're delineated in high school. Okay? And those are, at this point, those are the few concerns that I have. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson, I'll get the, um, the, the tag teacher. I believe that's the school now that hires two that are going to one. And I think it's a school that has two identified, but then is moving to one teacher because it's a pull-out model. But I'll, I'll find out exactly what that school is.
Ms. Higgins?
Thank you. This is my first time, so I give five minutes instead. Thank you very much. I wanted to ask and make sure I understood when, and regarding to the federal grants, you said the smaller learning communities and the grir up wouldn't affect the current grant. You mean the current children through the, those years, right?
Correct.
But it, but it will be changed effective fiscal year 12? There won't be new?
No, no, so we'll still, we still have those programs for next school year. But I believe both expire next year.
Okay.
And there won't be a program to reapply.
I see. So it'll follow the children, those children finish this next school year and then we won't be able to. Thank you. I'd like to ask about the reading recovery teachers for the literacy task force. And we're talking on question eight. We're talking about eight, 24 reading recovery teachers for 128 elementary schools, is that correct? Which would mean one per 5.3 schools? Or could you flesh out a little more how that would, how that would work?
That's, that's essentially it, Ms. Higgins. We have, we have 12 sets of schools and they're sets of 14 to 17. They're elementary through middle school. So I don't know the exact number of the elementaries right now. But the reading recovery, there will be, if we were able to get 24, we would have two individuals for every 12 to 15 schools.
Okay, so what would their day look like?
Their day would look like, well, first of all, they have to be in front of students in order to maintain their certification. So they, a portion of their day would be working with students because they would, we would have to have them in front of students in order for them to maintain their reading recovery certification. The other part of the day would really be working with other teachers and reading specialists to talk about the identification of students with reading difficulty, the interventions and supports for those students and instructional strategies associated with that. And we envision this working across grades, not just in one grade, but across some of the elementary grades just to build our systemic capacity to better address reading.
And, and certainly, given our budget constraints, I can see the value in this, in this approach. But if we're talking two individuals for 12 to 15 schools, then I'm just trying to have a hard time picturing how we would be able to train those grade-level teachers to be able to do that.
Not only would they, they will not necessarily be doing the training, they'll be working with individuals who will do the training. So many of our schools still have reading specialists.
Okay.
So we still have reading specialists. And in the past, we have some reading recovery teachers because they go from school to school. Some work very closely with reading specialists, others do not. And so, reading specialists could be using a completely different strategy than the reading recovery teacher is using. And what we want to do is take advantage of their expertise by number one, putting them in front of a smaller number of students. But then number two, training and developing reading specialists and reading teachers throughout the county.
And they're reading specialists in each school?
Yes.
So it's really making sure everybody's using the same model and emphasizing the expertise in the school or building that expertise within the school?
Yeah, and using the, not, and, and using not just the diagnosis, but almost a balanced literacy approach where there is word recognition, comprehension, word attack. And we're using all of those strategies and, and providing students with level text, which means that depending on their level, they'll be able to, their reading level, they'll be able to advance in reading text complexity as they move forward. This, this is a strategy that reading recovery uses. And what we're trying to do is apply that strategy across multiple early elementary grades.
And, and I certainly realize we're trying to deal this within budget constraints as well. I'm just, to have two people responsible for 12 to 15 schools, are we pulling the reading specialists or the reading teachers so that there's a group of them? Or do these people go to each school and have to implement that at each school?
Yeah, and in this model, they're actually be deployed based on need. I, I mean, based on need with respect to the most severe reading needs. That's a little different than the current model. The current model has them placed kind of around the county. And while all of them are addressing students with needs, this would, this model would really talk about applying that resource or connecting that resource to the, to the schools in most, with the greatest needs.
So they may actually be working, depending on that need, more intensely, well, more frequently at one school than, than another?
Yes.
All right, thank you. The pre-
And may I add just, I'm gonna, just make sure, there's a point for clarification. That, those 24 are based on receiving or obtaining funds from the county?
Yes. This is all proposed?
This is all proposed, based on if we're fortunate enough to receive funds from the county.
Otherwise, it would not be any additional attention to the reading needs of the children?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Can you talk a little more about what the pre-K plan details are? I know we've talked about we might get an extra or use a million dollars if we get that additional funds and then be able to have children be with Head Start. But I'm not sure what our picture is for pre-K.
Well, the picture, the current picture for pre-K is having, is serving all of the students that we currently serve in a half-day model. Which means that some students would come in for a morning session, some students will come for an afternoon session. So that's the current model. If we are, if we're able to obtain more resources, we were talking about applying those resources to adding, for the purpose of adding Head Start. And for every one, if we're fortunate enough to receive $1 million or more, we are predicting that that would be between six and seven classrooms.
Which would be 106 and seven classrooms and that's what, 22 per?
Yes, maximum 20.
Okay. That would be then full day?
That would be full day.
Okay.
And would have all of the other supports for?
Right, for head-
For the families.
Um, the, how many have, were enrolled in last year's program and how many have enrolled in this year's program? I know that program has opened up. I recall the number 4,000, is that? Of course, that could be how many can't read, so, go ahead.
I think including Head Start, it's around 6,000.
6,000?
Yes.
And how many are already enrolled this year?
I think we're going through the process right now of enrolling students.
You mean it's open enrollment? We don't have those numbers day-to-day as to where we are?
Yeah, we'll have to pull those for you.
I'm wondering whether it's down because of our half-day.
Yeah.
And one last follow-up question in regards to this. Is it correct that pre, anybody who applies for pre-K and is income-eligible can have that program, although it may not physically be at their closest school? That we never close it off if they're income-eligible? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I'll wait till next time. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome, Ms. Higgins. I had a quick question on the alternative ed slides, I mean, responses. Just for clarification, are we saying on Annapolis Road that the program capacity is 150 and the state rate of capacity is 100 and we're planning to be over? And then what is that based on?
What page are you on, Madam?
On page four.
Yeah, it says program capacity 150, state rate of capacity 100. But I am, Dr. Coleman Potter, does program capacity mean the number of students it serves throughout the year? Or year, or students who are there full year?
I, I do have the SRC at 100. We'll have to check and see where the 150 actually, where that number came from in terms of program operation. Because I'm not sure if that actually means that because children are serviced at night, that they're looking at congruent in terms of how those children-
So not at one time would we have?
Right, because they access the building during different points of the day.
Do we know what the current enrollment is?
I, I have it at 94 presently.
I was gonna say, I thought it was less than that. So we're basically saying we're gonna try to provide more space essentially for, for students. And then I noticed that we, I mean, I know that we haven't had or don't traditionally have a career and tech teacher allocated for the alternative ed, alternative sites. But it seems like for that type of curriculum and for the students who are generally enrolled there, that that would be a good idea. And I don't know if that's something the principal would be willing in terms of the discussions around the staffing levels there. I see the media specialist stays the same, but if there are any other trade-offs, just curious about that because of the type of program choice it is.
Madam Chair, I believe some of those students, and I'm thinking about the model as it currently stands, are served at Bladensburg.
At other, at other locations.
Yes, they're served at the career and technical education site at a school.
So, and, but we don't have a dual enrollment situation with like, for example, our Tall Oaks program?
No.
Okay. So, and then on the Green Valley and Edgar Allan Poe, are we saying that the capacity will be 225 based on the program capacity at Green Valley and Edgar Allan Poe with the merger of the school? Of the program?
It's staff for that number, yes.
Okay. And we believe that, that, but there'll be a separation in terms of the building with middle and high school?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, Ms. Beck?
With regards to, in the past, it was difficult for principals to get students into these programs. There appeared to be a problem with gatekeeping. So, how will the increased capacity, program capacity number be managed? And who will be the gatekeeper to allow students into the program?
That's where, Ms. Hathaway Beck, that's currently, we're currently creating a procedure and a process for that. And the individuals who are involved are student services. Michelle is also involved as well as Ms. Golson and Dr. Aubergas. And so, it really is looking more programmatically at the needs of students, matching them to a, to a slot that's available as opposed to just individuals coming, making application to one place and then they're either accepted or denied. And the other thing we found out as we review that is that many of the principals don't want that responsibility. They have the responsibility. They would much rather see a central system for how we determine seats and placement.
Mm-hmm. That seemed to have been missing when we looked at this in the past.
Yep.
Because principals had students that they felt this would be a good fit, but the local school was saying we're at their capacity. There, that disconnect existed. Okay, for ROTC, the top of page eight. I brought this up because during Ms. Durant's presentation, she talked about middle col, not middle college. middle college, secondary school reform, having a military science component where that would be one in every cluster. And now I see that, that you're even referring to transitioning of the ROTC program. So is it still your desire or your intent to phase out of ROTC at every local school? Because that's what the, the paragraph on the top of page eight tends to convey to me.
It, it does, and, but it also indicates that we're going back to serving all students at every, at every site. So we're going back to serving all students next year at every site, not looking at it in a geographical model. And the short answer to your question, Ms. Hathaway Beck, is that this is something we're gonna have to analyze and, and, and see what, and see where we are. We're already looking at what will happen to the students who are currently in programs and if they're not having that opportunity in their geographical area to have the same program and what impact that may have. So we're leaning more towards now having it in all high schools. But we, we need to look at this more in terms of what the impact will be if we moved it or phased it to geographical locations.
Okay, so the, the proposal in secondary school reform is still to gradual movement out of each, each school into the military science cluster format. But I think what you've heard from the board, and I don't want to speak for everyone up here, but I know what you've definitely heard from me, is I want ROTC in, in each of my schools, my, the high schools, in my district. Because it's not just the benefit for the ROTC kids, it's the benefit for the school as a whole. They are just such role models and they create such a tone in the building that I don't, I'm not looking forward to them being a cluster piece of secondary school reform.
Yeah, and so part of the, the secondary school reform was originally designed to really look at a true military option for all of our students, not ROTC option, but a true military option. Then we amended that to go to ROTC in every, in every geographical area. As I, as I think about this moving forward, that's why I said we had to analyze this to determine what's the, what's the best way to do this. I think that we should really be looking for a, how inside a secondary school reform do we have a true option for students who want a military experience regardless of where they attend? And where would that be located, number one? And then number two, having access to all of the pro, all of the current ROTC programs at every school, but in a smaller dose, if you will. So not where we have every student in ele, in ninth grade being required to have that experience, but making sure that if students want that ROTC experience, it's there and it's available for them. So this is, this is speaking towards the old proposal, but one of the things we're looking at is we're moving back to, as you know, ROTC in every site this year. We're evaluating, how do we, inside a secondary school reform, have an option just for students who want a true military experience as their high school experience? And then the third is, so what would be the most cost-effective way to, to offer that program? So right now, it is, the movement is back to ROTC at every site.
So will we get an updated?
Yes.
Because I know that in, I have a lot of ROTC students who are just so committed to the program that they follow the documents, and I share the documents with them, and they, they almost rest assured, this is where we are now. And I think this is not where we are now.
And the other problem with the gradual movement is that because secondary school reform happens over several years, we, some students, if we went to a gradual phase-out of some, some students would have an option and other students would not.
Right.
And so that's part of, once we decided this year to continue in every school, then it changes how we're able to move forward with secondary school reform.
So we did make the decision to continue in every school?
In every school, right. But we are gonna be looking at how do we offer a military option-
Right, okay.
For, for, for students in the county. And that may not be ge, that may not be in each cluster because we will not be able to afford that.
Right.
But it could be one location somewhere with all students having that.
To distinguish military science from ROTC?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And I'll just throw it out on the table, the bus, the bus discussion. There was a focus group last Thursday and they had seen a PowerPoint. I'm looking to see the PowerPoint that they got to see and to learn what communication was had with the focus group. I've been following, the listservs have just been overflowing with comments about weighing in on what this community wants. But I think it's important to say that the focus group had a very specific interest in a certain recommendation, whereas there were no focus groups for communities that were at their neighborhood schools who are losing positions because of this. So it wasn't really a, it was a focus group with a very specific agenda, that was my issue.
The focus group was focused primarily on specialty center transportation, no question about it. And we did, in fact, we even mentioned at the May 16 meeting that we would be convening a group of parents just to get their opinion. And their opinion may, may very well be, this stinks as a model. And I don't choose, but one of the, but we think that's input and we think that's good input. But I will get the presentation, I meant to have that for this meeting, I'm sorry for that. And Mr. Dotson, I think Ms. Lynch both co-sponsored or co-facilitated that meeting, and they can fill, they can give you more details about that. But essentially, the focus group, as I understand it, received the same information that we provided to the board around specialty center transportation. And it was presented in a manner that we have found a way to do this in a hub-based model. And if we don't get additional funding, hub would be what we would use moving forward. And we wanted to share that with them and just get their initial thoughts on it. So Ms. Lynch or Mr. Dotson?
Dr. Height, you've accurately summed it up. The presentation, Ms. Hathaway Beck, is really under revision. We gave them several slides that were drafts and examples, and so it is to be revised. We got great input from parents who are, who were identified by the PTA chairs of their respective schools and their respective programs. We've been following some of the blogs as well and are encouraged by some of the insightful, informative comments that we have received. And we think that will help us shape the, the service better moving forward, if in fact, that's the direction that we move in.
And to add, we had over 200, 230, 240 different inquiries or questions or input. One of the ones that was most interesting, or two of most interesting, is they really support and feel like we should move forward with the task force that's, that's been introduced by Dr. Height. Feel like that the input from the entire community on the task force will help look at the entire system as to how we can improve and look at the infrastructure, working with the county, as, as well as any consultants in the area that could be a part of that task force. So that, that also came, came out of this meeting.
Can I just ask a quick follow-up on that? On the, so right now, what we're saying, I was thinking about an email that we got from Mr. Armwood earlier in the week regarding what he thought or thinks, is it currently in the budget and what maybe parents think are in the, is in the budget? That was Ms. Beck's tone, regarding transportation. Anyway, are we, so are we at this point now that if there's funding, well, not even if there's funding, even though the hub system clearly does not save any money, we're saying we would go to the hub system, that's gonna be your recommendation because it's a change? A move towards?
It's, it's a better alternative to no transportation whatsoever.
Right, but what I, so my, my question is, if it's not saving any money, why aren't we just doing what we're doing now? Why would we go to something that costs the same amount? I'm just trying to understand what's the difference? Just that we have a different transportation system that costs the same amount?
It does not cost the same amount, Madam Chair.
How much difference?
So it doesn't cost the same amount. And in fact, we, and we've been going through this as well, and we've been going through this internally, and this is one, another one of those, there are several things that are taking place. Number one, we're changing the bell times at several schools. So the, the change of those bell times then just offer an amount of savings, if you will, towards what we have now. Students would be transported, larger groups of students would be transported from the hubs. So it's fewer miles, it's fewer routes, and so that is a savings in and of itself. The cost associated with the hubs would be cost associated with the individuals who would serve as the monitors, if you will. And those costs could be as high as $2 million, depending on how many we need and the hours and what rate. The, and so if we, if we break that out based on the number of students who are riding the hubs, we would be looking at approximately $800 per student using the hub, who are using the hub model. That's about $1,100 per student, less than students using specialty center transportation.
So, so you can say now it costs 8 million and if we go to the hub system, it'll cost 6 million? Are you able to say that? I'm just using numbers.
Like, it's, it's, it's 2 to 3 million, again, depending on how we class, we need, the, the big unknown is how many hours we need these new employees to work, what type of employees they will be, how much we will pay them.
Which is why I don't think we can say that it's not the same or savings until we know that.
And, and we're working on that, and of course, before the board votes, you'll have an exact cost figure for that.
Yeah, but that's not an $8 million amount. It currently costs us $8 million, that's what we took out of the budget.
Correct.
We're thinking that, that the maximum would be 2 to, I'm sorry, 2 to 3, no, 2 to 3 million dollars.
Minus 8, or total?
Total.
Okay. That was different than what you told me when I was having my conniption over to Read and Recovery when we first got the hub presentation, I thought. But that's cool. I mean, if it's a savings, it's a savings. I never thought it was. I guess my other question, not question, but recommendation on the task force, the only, I think that's a good idea to look at transportation across the county. I just want to make sure that when that task force is put together, that it really is a, a true makeup of the community. I don't want to see a task force, and this is not against specialty transportation or specialty programs, I think they're great, and encourage them. I just don't want to see a certain group specialized to come up with decisions that's gonna affect the entire county. I think there should be a makeup of every single parent group or community group that has, where children are gonna be affected, whether they live in my district, Ms. Boston's district, wherever. I think that's really critical and I think that it will be egg in our face if we don't do that. I think that'll be, I think that'll go against our equity policy. I, I just strongly hope that we make sure we do that.
And it has to look at more than just specialty center transportation too, Madam Chair.
That's my point.
So I mean, it has to look at how we're doing transportation comprehensively across the county. And I think, to your point, it has to be a group that represents every user of transportation, not just a certain portion of it.
That's my point. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, so I'm actually glad to hear that, and, and that's my mistake. I really thought that we were talking about transportation now costs us 8 million and that the hub would, would be a very slight change, not anything significant. But if we're talking 8 million versus 3 or 2 million, then I definitely would like to see that.
And I just want to add another statement to that. So optimally, if we receive more money and we're able to offer transportation to the specialty centers, even with the change in bus, in the bell schedules, it will be some savings, but optimally, having to, doing, getting more resources to provide transportation in the same fashion that we do now is what we, if we receive more resources, so that we can then go through the task force exercise and really address transportation in a more comprehensive approach.
Right, and, and I think that's a good point, just so that we don't now just, we got the money this year, what are we gonna, it still should be looked at? Wow, okay. Mr. Burrows and Mr. Armwood?
Thank you so much, Sharpe to Height and your staff for the work that you have done to accommodate the board and the community. And I also want to thank Chief Lynch and Chief Dotson for orchestrating the task force, the meeting that you had with the parents. Our parents want to be active and they want to give their input, so thank you for taking that in the meeting with them. I would also hope that you would have some students on this task force, because, you know, they are the, the riders of the buses and have good opinions too. My question, my first question is in regards to pre-K. If, if the council sets pre-K as a priority of theirs, that's a lot, pre-K itself isn't a line item, isn't a category, right? It's not a category, pre-K itself is not a-
Pre-K costs are budgeted in the instructional salary category.
Right, so if the council was to find additional money and put it there for pre-K, we could possibly save, go to full-day pre-K?
If, if in fact, they were able to find 10 million, yes.
Okay, 10 million, probably not. And the same for Read and Recovery. If, if they were able to find, okay, if they were able to find an additional 3 million and they said, we want this to take the count up from 24 to whatever, they could do that. And is that what they're signaling to you, that, that's how they're looking at our budget?
So they, as, as the board does, they ultimately obviously approve the budget, but it's approved at a very high level based on those functional categories. So again, if they were to add reading recu, money for Read and Recovery specifically, it would go into the line item instructional salaries.
Right.
What I've seen done in the past is in their budget ordinance, they will outline language that says this money has to be used for this program. But again, you know, then in June, the board either concurs with what the council's recommended or makes another recommendation, but again, that ultimately, if you change it, again, has to go back to the council for approval.
Mm-hmm, so have they signaled what their top priority is?
They've signaled a lot of top priorities and they've signaled, they, they have signaled specialty center transportation, Read and Recovery, media specialists, pre-K.
Everything we cut?
Camp Schmidt, I think that's it, but they, they've signaled quite a few.
So there's not gonna be a situation where they find enough money to make a difference in any category because it'll be all spread out? Is that, is that correct?
Well, any money will, will help. So any monies will help, but it's not likely that they can restore whole categories of cuts.
Right.
And the restoration of some of those cuts are pretty significant. And just if, using the 2 that you provided, Mr. Burrows, pre-K and Read and Recovery would be 17 million.
Right.
So it's not likely we will receive 17 million.
Mr. Armwood?
Thank you. I was not gonna ask a lot of questions about transportation because I was, really want to wait to see what the county council is going to do, but I'm hearing contradictions in what you're saying in different places and the presentation here. You're saying that we have in effect found the money to provide a transportation, transportation solution, saving what sounds like up to $5 million with the hub. But at the same time, we're telling the, the council that transportation is going to be eliminated unless we find more money. Am I correct, first of all, just?
We clarified that with the council at the last meeting, Mr. Armwood. We told them that we had found money for a hub model.
Now, the question was asked, how could the council send this, allocate money directly to a line item? And I heard at the council meeting that their opinion- And I heard at the council meeting that their opinion was that they would allocate funds to specific line items, knowing that they have the last review of our budget. Uh, is that correct then? How does that work into what you're saying and what's, what's happening?
Yeah. So, um, the budget's approved by the 15 major categories in state funding. So, um, the, the council could specifically get us additional money and specifically earmark it for whatever they so choose. Um, the way the process works is you have to reconcile with what they approve. So the, the board could, they could send a budget over and the board could say, you know, I, we're okay with it, vote and move to implement budget. If you disagree or want to make changes, it's within your right to do so also. But that, those changes then have to go back to the council for review. And ultimately, they either approve it or they don't approve it. So ultimately, they're the fiscal authority. Um, they have the last, as you said, the last say. So, so can they earmark specific money for specific items? The answer to that is yes.
Yeah, okay. This is why I have a headache in trying to think about this budget process. And I was hoping we could just be quiet until we find out exactly what they are going to do. Thank you.
That's kind of impossible, Mr. Armwood. Um, let's see. I'm sorry, I lost track here. Okay, colleagues, it looks like, um, uh, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules so we can do another round? Okay. Well, we're on third and fourth for some people. So we're probably moving to second that we suspend the rules at this point, um, with regard to the five-minute, three-minute rule. So, um, next I have, um, and let's do three minutes. So each round hereafter will be three minutes. We'll try that. Uh, I have Ms. Higgins and then Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. With this new, um, proposal regarding read, reading recovery, what does that cost?
For the 24 teachers, about $2.2 million.
$2.2 million. Okay. I wanted to ask about, um, the plan in regards to class size. And on the last page, page 16, we're talking about what happens in terms of a calculation regarding teacher allocation. So we're saying if it's a .5, um, it rounds up, which then would say that a class size per grade of kindergarteners is 22. Um, there would have to be 32 students in there before we would consider, um, an increase in a teacher. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. So could you talk to me about, these are all done, I, I'm looking at you, I guess it's you that's going to answer? Can you talk about, these are allocations based on what we think these student enrollment is going to be? So we're thinking that the class would hold until about 31. And if they get 32 or 35 students, what's the process? And how, what are our resources internally in order to be able to address that process?
So Ms. Higgins, last year, as you're aware, we actually started the Classroom Balancing Act, um, very early on in the school year. We were fortunate last year because we had resources from federal funds to actually use. And we bought 76 positions last year to balance. This year, we do not have those funds. And so the only way of what you've just described that we would be have to balance would be to actually look at every single classroom and to eve, and to have to remove teachers in those smaller classrooms and consolidate those classrooms so that a teacher could go to another building. Uh, we don't have the wherewithal this year to actually purchase additional positions. So we will be looking at the top of those thresholds before we'd be able to remove a teacher and to place that teacher in another building.
So, um, of the 76, you said, teachers we had last, 73? How many did we need to use in our system last year? Did we have to use all of them?
Every single one. We actually purchased those through a very deliberate process, using, of course, those dollars from the, um, education. I'm sorry, what was the funding source for that one, Matt?
Education jobs fund money from the federal government.
Okay. Um, so if, if we, um, have a class that has 32 kindergarteners, 33 kindergarteners, and we look to another class where that class size is smaller, it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily equate because maybe somebody, some class size maybe has 20 kindergarteners and they're the only class in there. So going without a net is going to be pretty challenging, isn't it?
It will be a challenge, Ms. Higgins. But in that scenario, just like we've had in past years, you could have, you could have that number in kindergarten. But then you could have, um, three first grade classes with 12 students in it. And which, and they may have, um, three teachers. And in that case, we would, we could reduce that number of teachers to, um, to two and then move that one first grade to kindergarten. That's the, and the issue last year is that we added the 73 teachers. But we added those 73 teachers to keep from taking teachers from one place and putting and reassigning them to another. So even though we added the teachers, we still had places with below average, um, class sizes. And this year, we would have to be more deliberative in looking at those below average class sizes in order to meet the needs of the class sizes that are much larger.
I certainly understand that you, as ones who deal with this every day, understand the ramifications even, even more than, than I would. But, um, especially with relationships being built with the, which is why I assume you didn't, um, you didn't change those teachers out regarding those class sizes. So, um, and I would assume there'd be every effort to kind of keep the same teaching staff in the same school, if at all possible, in terms of priorities. But it also sounds like it's a moving target, particularly the first two or three months of school. So who is going to be the closest one in terms, is that one of your staff? Is one person specifically assigned to that? Or how does that work?
We actually, um, last year, we'll continue the same process. Not only do we do live body counts in those targeted classrooms that were a problem or we thought were a problem, but also the principals who are responsible for providing those reports to us. And we began sitting very early on at the beginning of the school year. We didn't wait until after Labor Day to actually make those decisions.
Okay. Um, and right now, we are planning on having a pool of 25, is that correct? And what is the cost? We're not having any? I, I thought I understood.
Right now, we have no pool, no, ma'am.
I had, I had understood. And I'm correcting my understanding that, that we had a million dollars and we're going to do 20, 25 teachers. We have nothing to decide for that.
One million dollars would only buy us 15.
15. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins. Um, Ms. Johnson?
Um, Dr. Height, recently I said in helping me and hopefully all of us to get to where, right now, we're in limbo because we don't know how much we're getting from the county. I mean, that has not been settled. If we are faced with not getting, um, additional funding targeted to transportation, targeted to, uh, reading recovery, et cetera, it leaves us with less money than we actually need to keep this, these different pieces going. So I really think it's important that we all understand that everything that happens costs. So 8.6 million dollars, what does it buy other than gas, cost of transportation, et cetera? What else could we get for it that is systemically needed to move us to where we want to go in our five goals? How much, um, do these other movable pieces? It isn't that none of them, they don't have value. They do. But we are in a major crisis here, like every place in the country. I have preferences. I've decided. I'm not going to fight them anymore. I want the system to survive. I want it to work, not for this year, but I want it to work for the next three, five, 10. So the last thing that I need to ask you, let's say we get the money from the council for these pieces. Where are the guarantees for the next year? Do we have a plan that if we don't get it for the next year, now that it's being gotten and the hope goes out, oh, they'll do it again, suppose they don't, how are we going to pay for it? There has got to be planning for the what-if, and the what-if is going to come. So I am asking that we begin to put reality on the table. People need to get comfortable with what happens if we don't get it. And I'm willing to live with that. I don't like it. I am mad as I can be that we don't have enough money. But sir, I have to tell you, it is incredible asking for things we can't afford today or tomorrow. Even if a night rides in and gives us the 8.6 and the 2. this and the 4. that, where are the guarantees that go with it that's going to happen for the next two years, three years, and five years? It's not fair. Plans have got to be made.
Ms. Johnson, there's one reason why we are looking at how we do reading more comprehensively than just having a program and a group of individuals to address the needs of, of, uh, percentage of students who are having reading difficulty. It's one reason why we devise those plans because we will not, it doesn't look like we will be able to sustain the model we used last year moving forward. Under the best circumstances, we would not likely be able to sustain that. Regardless of what happens with transportation, we have to do the task force because we have to, we cannot sustain the model that we have for transporting students. Six students on a bus, um, that, in this revenue climate is just not, that's not realistic. So we have to look at the task force in order to move our work forward. How we structure and size schools is also something that we have to look at as well. Schools under 350 require more resources because there are fewer students who support those. And all of these things, the reason I'm mentioning all of these is because these are all mo, these are all structures we are looking at today to revise with a view towards trying to face the revenue picture that's going to be here in the future. It's also one reason, quite frankly, while although painful, the reduction of 1,300 positions is absolutely essential for our ability to be the right size based on app-per-pupil funding. And just looking at repairing and, um, right sizing our structure or our system so that we're able to move forward on the types of activities, supports, structures that our students will need as, um, as, as we educate them through our system. In years where it's likely, we're going to receive less, fewer and fewer resources. So part of what we're doing this year, and part of what we began last year and the year before, really is looking at how do we do this work moving forward. It's one last thing. It's also the reason why we're really looking at student-based budgeting. So that the monies actually follow students and that how those monies are used are more defined by school improvement plans as opposed to by a staffing formula.
Dr. Height, as I look at the, um, calendar in terms of when the, this week, the council should be voting on their budget, it's, it's a little scary because, you know, we still don't, we don't know what transportation really is going to look like. So I guess my question would be, if we're today at May 23rd and the council votes on Thursday? Is it Thursday, you think? The 26th, okay. Um, what's the likelihood that we would have from you, um, the budget based on what they do on Thursday by June, let's say that's one week. So let's say from the 20th, by June 9th, 2nd or 9th? Wait. If today's the 26th, no, Thursday's the 26th, okay, so that's only a week. So what's the likelihood that you would have it in a week and what's more realistic is two weeks, which would be June 9th?
June 9th would be a better date.
Okay, so that would be the Thursday, Thursday, June 9th. And then we would have a meeting on the 15th.
That's correct.
So if the board was able to get it June 9th, then we would have a some, at least a, a week ahead of time to digest it. And my fear is that all the moving parts will still be moving because just because we know how much money the council is going to give us, still won't answer the question, how many students? I'm, I'm thinking about what we said earlier in terms of how many, for, whether it's middle college, how many students are going to be actually traveling? Because that's a lottery, that was done by lottery, right? Okay. And we still don't have those numbers, though? We don't, we still don't have the lottery for that?
No, we have, we have the lottery for that, but we're waiting for the assessments because all those students had to take an assessment.
Oh, that's right. Okay. So I guess where I'm going is, um, how comfortable are you, and I, I know there are other deliberations, but how, how, so, once we get those numbers, how definitive will you be with regard to this transportation issue, um, by June 9th?
We're definitive with it right now. It's based on a hub model. But, but if we receive more funds from the county, it would look very much like it does now. And so we would have, there will still be new bell times at certain schools. But, um, we, we would be definitive that on the 9th. Because what we're asking for from the county is to return it to its current form.
So you're comfortable right now that you know the exact locations where the hubs are going to be, how the drop-offs are going to occur, would occur, um?
We know that right now.
But you don't know the monitor, you don't know how many monitors.
We don't know how, the hours of the monitors and, and from what, um, unit, the, the, and what we would, what would be required as their rate of pay.
So then I guess, and, and a more appropriate question for me then is, by June 9th, since you're definitive now that by June 9th, then we could actually see, these are the locations, this is how many monitors will be needed, and we'll have a better view on cost, um, specifically around, um, because you'll know that information. And that'll also include the transportation for middle college?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay, so June 9th and... All right, Ms. Beck and then Ms. Mr. Armwood.
I, I wish I was as, uh, good with the hub proposal as you are. I'm not. I, I don't really feel I have my arms around this. Um, and I think that the article in the Gazette kind of underscores, a lot of people don't have their arms around this. I, I almost feel like I need an entire, uh, presentation on, which might have been given to this focus group. I just sent an email with the reminder to get us that. But I know what hubs have been discussed about in the past. And it's such a radical change that here we are in June, maybe telling our parents we might be going into hubs. And also, I know I've asked this before, but the transportation discussion is anyone outside of boundaries, their home boundary school?
That's correct.
So it's, it's everyone who travels outside of their boundary school?
That's correct.
Because I'm still getting emails about, well, this doesn't apply to me. Okay. The, um, when, when we talked, um, in the initial budget presentations and we asked you for your, your priorities, you said if we got any additional money, your priority would be for lowering classroom sizes. So now we're, now are you saying if we get any additional money, your priority is, um, retaining our current transportation system?
My priority is still lowering class size, Ms. Hathaway Beck. The, um, I'm talking from the perspective of the transportation system because it's been signaled to us by the council that transportation, reading recovery, camp Schmidt, pre-K, because it's been signaled to us by the council that transportation, reading recovery camps, pre-K, are all things that they want to direct funding toward.
So they don't have lowering class size as one of their priorities? Which was your stated priority to the board?
They don't have lowering class size as one of theirs and primarily because for every one we bring down, it's a $13 million price tag, and it's not likely that we're going to receive that much from the council.
Also, I'm forwarding you an email from a group of parents that I've received, a letter from John Hanson. And it says, the enrichment classes, art, music, Spanish dance, and physical education are being eliminated. So I just sent you that because the, the discussion in the community continues to be that these elective programs, and I don't really think PE is elective, but that those are the ones that are going to be the, the ones hit the worst. The staffing sheet that we got in this, the K to eight staffing sheet, I would think that there was a separate one for French immersion, Montessori, because those are, or they were staffed slightly differently. And Dr. Arbogast was talking about how he was going to have to go in and work with them to ensure that this 22 to 1 was workable with regards to their programmatic piece. Now that's my question there.
That's, that's correct, Ms. Hathaway Beck. And the staffing model at the, at, at those schools haven't really changed. What's changed is our adherence to the staffing model that is inside of our budget book. The, the, many of the schools now are staffed at, in some cases, a 12 to 1, but generally on average at a 14 to 1 staffing. And it's like the, what we did a couple of years ago with the high schools. We really brought them down to the staff that they were supposed to have. So we actually weren't reducing their staffing. We were just staffing based on the model that was inside of our budget document. And that's what we would apply here. What this doesn't, what this chart doesn't detail are the number of additional staff at all of these schools over the amount that's budgeted.
Right, right. A final, we were looking for the list of retirees. We got the numbers. We got the numbers, but we had asked for a list by name so that we could see principals and key leadership people who are leaving. I know I, I'm hearing them periodically.
You want the requests?
I want the, no, I want to know the retirees by name?
What, what we're trying to?
Or position type?
Yeah, what we're trying to do for each board member is put together individuals in their schools who are going to be impacted by that. And then we'll do that for each of you. And then we'll give you the list of each individual that has been approved or requested.
I would say who's leaving.
Okay.
Because we saw at the employee recognition event, there were several principals there who were in the retiree line. And, you know, that, I think I'd like to have a heads up.
So do you want just the incentive approvals, or, I mean, because we do have other retirements and resignations?
I would say all the retirees.
All the retirees.
Okay.
So that we know who our principals are, who are going, who our lead administrators are, who are going?
We're, we're pulling that together to you by district. So that each of you will have the district retirees, and then we'll pull together the list of all the retirees.
So we'll all get the same document, though?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Armwood?
I'd like to ask a clarification regarding middle college. I thought that in the presentation, middle college students were providing their own transportation, not being transported by our system, because we have no borders for this program. So please explain or correct me on what you're planning for the middle college?
It depends, Mr. Armwood, on whether or not we're offering transportation to everyone else. And during that presentation, at the, at the time, we were not offering transportation. And so therefore, middle college students would not have access to transportation either. If we go to a hub model, they would be using a hub model for transportation. If we restore transportation as it currently is constructed now, they would have access to transportation. So that this, these conversations have, have moved based on their conversations and where funding was coming from. The fact now that we have a hub-based model, we would apply that to middle college as well.
I guess what I envisioned, had envisioned, whereas middle college is a brand-new program offering with a unique boundary structure, that we could go into this program offering without offering special transportation, except perhaps, perhaps for farms or for low poverty, and as a way of saving money. And this is where I had pictured it. So I was surprised to hear that we're going to now provide transportation for everyone.
Transportation was always in the budget. The reason we were talking about the elimination was because we were talking about the elimination across the county. It would have an, I'm afraid it would have an adverse effect on middle college as the school is designed to serve half the population that are coming from circumstances of poverty. And I'm afraid that if we eliminated transportation as an option for that school, then it would dramatically eliminate some of the students who are in that category, in my opinion.
Is it feasible to only provide transportation for the situation of poverty? I'm just asking the question.
I think it would be feasible unless those students live next door to each other. And then you have a, and you have one having access to, and then one being transported. But yes, it's, it's feasible.
Okay, thank you.
But that same assessment is not being done for specialty programs in general, just for middle college in terms of transportation. So in other words, say, once we get all the numbers back and you're comfortable with, you know, what the final transportation model will look like that you want to propose? So let's say you go to the hub system. We don't really know how many parents will say, okay, never mind, I'm not going to do it. Or if we can't do it, we don't know. If, if it's what, you know, listen to Ms. Johnson, in terms of, you know, what if? Let's say the council comes back and say, we've picked everything else and we, we just don't have the money for transportation. We really don't have an assessment of how that's going to impact. And thinking in mind that we're talking July and, well, not even, I don't even want to count August. We don't know how many parents will then say, can't do it. And we also don't know how many of those parents, well, in a sense we do, because we don't have any farms set aside. We already know that for specialty transportation, we don't have a significant number of students in conditions of poverty, which is a travesty. But having said that, we don't really know what that's going to look like. So we could be revising transportation again because we don't know what's going to happen with, with the final decision.
We will have the hub model, Madam Chair. We don't know if all of the parents who are accessing specialty center transportation right now will access the hub model. We heard, and this is anecdotally, but because I wasn't at the meeting, but I heard from the meeting that parents felt like that at least this was an attempt to offer individuals a way to get to schools. But most of the parents said, I would just bring my kids to school instead of, instead of doing that. And so we don't know who would use that. But by the same token, we also didn't have voice of everyone who uses it. And so it's making sure that we are able to meet their needs as well.
Well, we, we would be able, because we are already able, though, to assess who would fall into a quote-unquote farm scenario if we had to. Okay. Mr. Burrows and then Ms. Higgins.
I have a question that I just wanted clarification on in regards to Camp Schmidt, Owen Science Center. But before that, I want to introduce my mom. My mom's here, sitting in the back, so just wanted to say hi to her. But just, just to be clear, the people at Camp Schmidt and Owen Science Center have already received letters saying that they could potentially be impacted. That is just something that we have to do to give them notice. But they also have people there who are retiring. So the people who are retiring could save the people that have already received letters. We just had to submit letters to follow the procedure of letting them know ahead of time.
Yeah, we have to provide notification. If someone may be impacted, we feel like it's appropriate for us to provide that notification and do it in enough time so that the individual is fully aware. If they are impacted, then we would, if they are impacted, then we would come back and send them a letter verifying that that position, it has in fact been impacted by this. The depend, to your question about who remains, that is a function of our reduction in force that would be driven by the negotiated agreement and is based primarily on seniority. But that, how we do that is inside of, is determined by the negotiated agreement.
And when will they know officially if they've been impacted or not?
We want to notify everybody of the final impact by June 15th.
Thank you.
That's not going to be possible, is it, Dr. Height?
Non-instructional staff by June 15th. Teachers, we'll notify them that they'll have a job. We just don't know where you're going to be placed and as vacancies open up. They have till July 15th, but current employees have till July 15th to resign. So until those final resignations come in, we won't know exact placements.
Okay. Ms. Higgins?
Yeah, let me just follow up on that. So you, you want to notify people before the board makes its final vote?
The vote is the 20th, right?
Right.
So if there are changes, right, then we would have to?
So we would wait till?
The majority of the, of the placements and separation letters by the 15th, but obviously knowing that the board's voting on the 20th. And so there may be additional personnel actions after that.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm sorry, Ms. Higgins, and so I'm, I'm confusing everybody. We changed the board meeting because I, I'm sorry. So we would, it would be based on whatever the date the board takes the vote. I said the 15th, I meant the 16th. I think we were originally on the 16th.
That's right.
Now it's, because it's moved to the 20th, that's the date that, on which we would give notification.
Okay, thank you. We have already talked about middle college and the transportation costs and that those transportation costs are in there as an estimate in terms of providing enough funds so that it would be available. But the reality is, is that, I think that was already previously pointed out, having $10,000 for 100 students for transportation is probably higher than we're going to actually use. So if there are reductions in the transportation costs for middle college, and if as a result of going halftime less of the low-income families access themselves to pre-K, and then there are reductions in those costs, what, what are we saying? Or is that, what would you recommend is the top priority to do with those additional funds? Which would not be known until probably mid-year? Or I guess two or three months into it? We know in August.
We would know before then, but the, the priorities that I would establish are having a pool of teachers to address large class sizes, particularly at the earlier grades, so that we can lessen the impact of moving individuals from one place to another after people have become familiar with those.
Okay, all right.
So whatever monies we could use to have a pool of teachers, I think is important.
Yes, okay. That's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. So as we wrap up, Dr. Height, I think we have June 9th as our date for the board to get its present, its, its. And when I say June 9th, I don't mean a meeting, I mean the document, the paperwork. But I think as we look at the calendar, it strikes me that we sort of need a separate transportation discussion because it does encompass a lot of things. So I'm wondering if what we have scheduled for the 15th, which is the CIP Fab meeting, if we could actually devote, I don't know if we can start an hour earlier or something like that, but I'm thinking if we devote some time on that day, since we're already going to be here, that, that what we do is have a discussion that's clearly about the budget, because we're going to have to do that, but definitely about transportation, a full blowout. So that sounds like the, it's already set to schedule, well, let's see. We're going to have to adjust some things that's on the calendar because we actually now have agenda setting. But that's for the 23rd meeting that's been canceled. So we won't need to do that. So I'm thinking for, on that day at 4:00, since we were scheduled to be here anyway, maybe we can have that as the transportation discussion. And then from there, we can go into the budget and then finish up with CIP. If that sounds feasible. Well, we, it's, we're, we already, no, what, it's set right now as a finance audit and budget meeting, which is where we discuss budget anyway. Correct. So, I mean, we can title it that if we need to, but I think it, it's, it's pretty much set up the same way the work sessions are. There's, there's just discussion for, for deliberations. And in that way, hopefully, we'll be prepared to discuss the final points on the 20th of June, which is the change date for the board meeting from the 16th to the 20th. And that should finish us up. But if it doesn't, we're going to have to have another meeting in June to wrap up the budget. There's not a lot of time, clearly, because we have to have it back by June 30th. Ms. Higgins?
Yeah, so the first time we'll be back together after the council votes would be the 15th?
That's correct. That, but we will get the documents on the 9th. And the reason for that is because the graduation schedule is very heavy.
Yes, 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 I understand.
So we have graduations. So June 9th will be the date that we've agreed upon to get comprehensive, well-thought-out, fully answered budget based on the council's vote. And then on the 15th, we'll meet on that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Ms. Johnson?
Sure.
It could. When we were doing the scheduling for the superintendents to evaluate the color-coded?
Yes.
That would be very helpful.
Oh, sure.
Doesn't have to be color-coded, but to, to put it all there, that way you can just check it off and?
Absolutely.
When are we due to have whatever to the board office that you request?
I'll make sure the board has that in color code.
That would be very helpful as the dates. Because, and even, it might be good if we put in potential whole spaces, hold spaces. If we need, this is where it would go.
Right.
That'll be helpful.
I'll make sure the board gets that.
Yeah, thanks.
Today's Monday, you'll have it before Wednesday, okay? All right. Seeing no other buzz-ins, questions, comments, concerns? Dr. Height, do you have anything? Okay. All right, colleagues, that adjourns our budget work session for today. And we'll, our expectation is to get more documentation by June 9th. We'll hear the vote, obviously, by, by the end of this week. And then we'll meet and you'll get the color-coded timeline by Wednesday. We adjourned. Thank you.